Pursuant to Executive Order N-2920 executed by the Governor of California on March 17th, 2020, and as a response to mitigating the spread of coronavirus known as COVID-19, the regular meeting of the Planning Commission scheduled for Tuesday, May 11th, 2021 at 6:00 PM will allow members of the public to participate and address the commission during the open session of the meeting via teleconference only. Thank you.
Thanks, John. I'd like to call to the order of our Paramount Planning Commission, May 11th, 2021, 6:00 PM. Actually, it's 6:02 PM. Can I get a pledge allegiance from?
I guess myself. Mr. Ray Halloway, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of members?
Commissioner Bautista, Commissioner Gutierrez, Commissioner Weisenberger.
Here.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza.
Here.
Commission Chair Abrego.
Here. Can I get a motion to excuse, is it excuse, Bautista? Commissioner Bautista from, is that correct?
Yeah, I'll motion to excuse Commissioner Bautista for the meeting.
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second?
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes.
Approval of the minutes for April 13, 2021? Take a look at the minutes and we agree on it. Can I get an approval in a second? First and a second?
Take a motion to approve the meeting, the minutes?
I will second.
We have a first and a second?
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is reorganization, item number two.
Thank you, Commission Chair Abrego. Nominations are open for the Office of Chair. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Weisenberg as Chair.
Are there any further nominations? Nominations are closed. When called, please indicate your choice for Chair by stating the last name of the Commissioner you wish to vote for. Commissioner Abrego?
Weisenberg.
Commissioner Bautista, not present. Commissioner Sparza?
Weisenberg.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Weisenberger.
Commissioner Weisenberger.
Weisenberg, yes, I guess.
Congratulations, Chair Weisenberger.
Thank you. Okay, that means that we are now open nominations for the Planning Commission Vice Chair. Nominations, please.
I nominate Gutierrez for Vice Chair.
Are there any further nominations? The nominations are closed. When called, please indicate your choice for Vice Chair. Commissioner Abrego?
Gutierrez.
Commissioner Sparza?
Gutierrez.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Gutierrez.
Chair Weisenberger?
Gutierrez.
Congratulations, Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Okay. Public comments?
Yes, sir. We do have one public comment. John King is going to call the person right now.
Thank you, John. Give me one moment. Get them on the line.
Hello, this is Pat.
Oh, hello, Pat. My name's John King. I'm with the Planning Department and I'm here with the Planning Commission. And we've opened public comments. We've received a request to give comments. And you have three minutes, and that will start right now.
Terrific. So am I on now?
You are. Go ahead.
Super. Well, this is Pat Maloney. I'm the owner of the property on Rosecrans. And just thought I'd make myself available. We think this is a good company and will be a good customer for us and a good company to have in the city. So I just thought it'd be good to get on the phone and say hello and see if there was any questions. But I'd let you know I'd be happy to answer.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That concludes the comments.
Thanks so much.
We have one other comment. I'll get this person on the phone.
We have more. Oh, okay. John, that was item number four. That was item number four.
On Rosecrans.
Did we get the wrong person on the phone?
We did.
Okay.
Yeah. Just out of order, though, right?
Hello, Al?
Hi, Al. This is John King with the City of Paramount. We've opened the Planning Commission meeting and we received your public comment, your request to provide comment. You have three minutes to speak and that will start right now. Go ahead.
Okay. Bear with me. Good evening, planning commissioners and members of the redevelopment board. My name is Avilardo Pacovo. My number is (562) 477-7150. I am the owner of the 8426 Albrook Street in Paramount and have lived there for a very long time. My testimony for the public comment, which is not in tonight's agenda, this is a throwback related to the project which was approved for demolition of the, for the demolition of a liquor store known also as a five-store market, including the residential dwelling that which is next to me, which is 8432 Albrook Street. I'm addressing my concern at the time because I did not receive a 10-day notice to participate at the meeting of the redevelopment review board. On November 10th, 2020, I visited the planning department and asked to see the file for the project. The staff referred me to the records department. I submitted my request on April 30th that the records will be furnished to me within 10 days from May 3rd. I'm still in the dark into what is planned. However, staff provided me with a one-page conceptual of the architectural conceptual site plan. I found a YouTube video. I also found a YouTube video for the meeting and presentation, but I was surprised to the commission that the commission did not inquire about the size of the structure and there was no question to how some of the dumpsters being is going to a place within 25 feet from next to the residence, my driveway, obviously, and whether the applicant participating to neighbor ethics reached out to the neighboring homes that would be impacted from the stench of the cans left between 25 feet from my living room window. The can is also placed adjacent to driveway, which you guys are going to put a driveway next to the driveway I currently have. So I find when they open the car, there's smell of the dump, obviously. Also, you have questioned the setback. I have questions on the setback or consider the driveway apron on the business impacting on the residence.
Mr. Pacovo, you have 20 more seconds.
I wondered if the city attorney convinced the city made a store owner an offer he couldn't refuse. Is that what it took to convince the applicant store owner to meet the compliance of what liquor store is now? Basically, the board has approved a negligent store owner and gave him more rights than the resident of the neighborhood. If you put yourself in my shoes, I have lived in the home for over 30 years and had...
Mr. Pacovo, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. My apologies for the out-of-order sequence. Okay, well, all right, very good. So those are, I guess that closes our public comments for tonight.
Yeah, no further comments.
Okay, very good. New business. We have a public hearing. Let's go to item number three, conditional use permit number 877. A request by Ali Haqam Fusion Food Hall to operate a food hall at 7340 Alondra Boulevard in the planned development with performance standard zone. Staff report, please.
Yes, Chairman Weisenberger and members of the Planning Commission, this item is a request for a conditional use permit to allow the operation, excuse me, of a food hall at 7340 Alondra Boulevard. This item is in connection with a development review application to remodel the exterior of the building at the site. That was approved by the Development Review Board in January of 2020 and then was granted a 12-month extension in January of 2021 by the Development Review Board. And Associate Planner Ivan Reyes will give you more detail.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the commission. I'm here to present conditional use permit number 877 to operate a food hall. Sorry, going backwards here. So the request is to establish and operate a food hall. The location is 7340 Alondra Boulevard. It's located in a PDPS zone. The site is a 66,240 square foot lot and it has a 33,128 square foot building. I do want to mention that just a portion of the building, the front retail portion of the Platini Jeans building, which is the existing use, will be converted to the food hall. So I'll go into detail later on in the presentation. Here's the aerial map of the project location, 7340. It's on the northeast corner of Alondra Boulevard and Garfield Avenue. Here are pictures of the existing conditions. On the left-hand side, you see the front portion that will be converted to the food hall use. And to the right is the existing parking conditions. Just to give you some background leading up to this use, in March of 2020, the City Council adopted ordinance number 1123, which allows for restaurants and food halls in the PDPS zone with Planning Commission approval of a conditional use permit. Furthermore, on January 16th of 2020, the Development Review Board approved a remodel of the existing retail warehouse. They sort of met delays due to COVID and all these other things that happened last year. So on January 13th of this year, the applicant received a one-year extension from the Development Review Board related to those, that exterior remodel. And just to give you an overview of essentially what a food hall is, it's an open restaurant concept. It's small creative entry businesses. It's a good business incubator. You have a variety of businesses of retail and food uses in one location. It's an excellent driver for, of economic development. You know, you have people spending locally here in the City of Paramount. And it's also considered a social destination where people can just go and gather and have fun. And just to give you an idea of that in real life, these are several examples of established food halls. So you have Rodeo 39 out in the OC area. That's one of the newer ones. You have the Anaheim Packing District, which it used to be a citrus packing warehouse and they retrofitted it to, for a food hall use. You also have the Hangar out in Long Beach. It's inspired by an aviation hangar back when military and commercial aircraft were constructed in the area. And we can forget Grand Central Market, probably one of the oldest here in SoCal. It's a downtown historical landmark and it's been operating since 1917. And with that, that leads us to our proposed use here in the City of Paramount, which is Fusion Food Hall. They're proposing to have 19 tenants for food and retail uses. The majority of the uses will be related to food. Their hours of operation are from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM daily. No onsite sales or consumption of alcohol beverages is being proposed. As for the tenants, that's to be determined. The owner is in negotiations with several food uses related to, including like pizza, burgers, coffee shop and other fusion-inspired cuisine. So that's yet to be determined. Here's the site plan. So as I mentioned before, just a portion of the building will be, what exactly, 15,165 square feet of the retail use will be converted to the proposed food hall. The other portion is an existing warehouse and that will remain the same. There also did some changes to the parking. So they'll have a total of 75 parking spaces, including two electric vehicle charging stations and two ADA parking spaces. And here's a close-up of the floor plan. So you see the 19, 19 tenant spaces that will be dedicated for food and retail. And a variety of seating arrangements there. And as part of the DRB, this should be, this should look familiar. This is the exterior of, from the street side of Alondra Boulevard, what it could look like. It has seating arrangements outside for outdoor. They have the modern contemporary look that will be changed. And here's for the pictures of what the inside could look like. Again, contemporary look, different seating arrangements and different kitchens and tenant spaces there. So with that, staff recommendations to adopt resolution number PC 20005 for conditional use permit number 877. And this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ivan. This is a public hearing. John, have we got any comments from the public?
No comments in favor or opposed?
Okay. And we need a motion to close public hearings, please.
I'll motion to close the public hearing. I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Abrego?
Yes.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes. Okay, if there aren't any more questions, then I guess we'll need a motion to adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Number 20-005.
I'll motion to approve.
Commissioner Bautista, I can second that motion.
Okay, roll call, please. Thank you.
Commissioner Abrego?
Yes.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes. Okay, item number four, conditional use permit number 904. This is a request by Nadal Aquam Complete Home Goods to operate an e-commerce importer and distributor of home textiles, bedding and similar products at 7551 Rosecrans Avenue in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone.
Yes, thank you, Chair Weisenberger and members of the commission. This conditional use permit is a request to operate an e-commerce business that imports and distributes home textiles. And the business would be located at 7551 Rosecrans Avenue. And Planning Intern Erica Barbero will go over this item with you.
The提议 of the President, usually, is permit 904 for complete home goods. The request is to operate e-commerce importer and distributor of home textiles, which include bedding and other similar products. The location in question is at 7551 Rosecrans Avenue in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. Los Angeles County records show that the building is 7541 Rosecrans Avenue. The warehouse that the operations will be taking place are, the warehouse size is at 29,917 square feet. The proposed hours of operation are from 7:00 AM to 5:00 Monday through Friday, and they will have six employees onsite. In addition, there will be outgoing shipments through the United States Postal Service as well as UPS, and they will be coming in and out through standard delivery vehicles. And they are expected to have two trailers of incoming new product monthly. Here's an example of the applicant's website as well as their Amazon Marketplace profile. Here are some examples of the products that they'll be selling. Here is a map of where the property is located. It is located just east of Garfield Avenue. There are other buildings on the property. The building in question is highlighted in purple. Here we have an image of what the property looks like from the street and the exterior. To the right is where one entrance of the building is. And to the bottom, there is a truck well and another door. And here we have the site plan. Again, the property or the building is located towards the back of the property. We have a site plan. The office or, sorry, the building has five office spaces, a lobby, a lounge for employees, and then you could also see the truck well. With that, we recommend approval for CUP 904, Resolution Number 21007. Thank you. An applicant is available on standby. The invite. You have any questions?
Thank you, Erica. Okay, so public hearing. John, have we got any comments tonight?
Just the one that we took earlier. And nobody, no other comments.
Okay, thank you. Then let's please have a motion to close the public hearing portion.
I make a motion to close the public hearing for permit number 904.
Sparza will second it. Okay, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, then we can entertain a motion now to adopt Planning Commission Resolution PC 21007.
This Commissioner Gutierrez, I do have a question. Just to clarify, the discrepancy in the address, you said that LA County has 7541. Is that just because every unit has a different address?
That's correct. So we did look up, you know, we checked in with Building and Safety and they did have different addresses. So we just looked at county records to verify.
So that's like the main network, okay?
Okay, we're ready for a motion if someone would like to make it.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number PC 21007. I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Abrego?
Yes.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger?
Yes. Okay, item five, zoning ordinance text amendment, number 22. This is a request to establish regulations for single-room occupancy housing developments in the RM multiple-family residential zone in the City of Paramount to implement a housing element program and comply with federal fair housing laws.
Yes, Chair Weisenberger and Commissioners, this item is a request for a zoning ordinance text amendment to establish regulations for single-room occupancy housing developments in the multiple-family residential zone. Approval of this code amendment will implement a housing element program and is required by the state of California. And this ordinance will also help us to comply with a federal fair housing law. And John King will give you details.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Chair Weisenberger and Commissioners. Single-room occupancy, SROs for short. So today we're going backwards, a little time warp. And again, like John said, this is a request to establish regulations as for SROs in the RM zone, the multiple-family residential zone, to implement, again, the housing elements program. That's the state requirement. And secondly, to comply with federal fair housing law. And SROs, they've been around forever in different forms. But in a nutshell, they're small apartment homes, typically developed with shared bathroom facilities. So kind of the first step, you could say, from living with, as you grew up, maybe it's the first step out of home. And back to the housing element. So we've been talking about the housing element a lot lately because this year we are updating the city's housing elements. We do this these days every eight years. And the state has a statute. The statute requires housing elements. And here's a quote, "to facilitate and encourage the development of a variety of types of housing, of types of housing for all income levels, including," and there's a number of different categories, supportive housing, permanent supportive and transitional housing. One is, and in this case, single-room occupancy units. So it's mandated. And so our housing element includes a program to implement that, a single-room occupancy housing program. This actually went back, we do these in different, they're called cycles of housing elements. So it came up a couple of cycles back. It's been postponed a few times, but we really got to do it. And here's why. 2012, the City Council adopted what's called the Analysis of Impediments of Fair Housing Choice, and that's to comply with fair housing law with the federal government, so with the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. So with that, HUD is requiring the city to implement this SRO program right away. And HUD, just a little reminder, that they fund a lot of, they give us a lot of money, as with other jurisdictions. They, we get CDBG funds, community development block grants, and we get home funds from HUD. Pays for a lot of what the city does. Basic services pays for code enforcement, pays for sidewalk repair, pays for graffiti removal, pays for the home improvement program to help out residents fix up the outside of their homes. And it funds the commercial rehabilitation program to help business owners, property owners, fix up the outside of their businesses. So we rely on it heavily. And without, with the loss of that income, that funding source, it would be very devastating to Paramount. So this is something we have to do. So we have this proposed ordinance and we, you know, looked at best practices and want to make sure that these types of developments fit the best they can into the multiple-family residential zone. So we follow along with the zone. So in terms of density, be the same as the zone, up to 22 housing units per acre, so 22 of these smaller units per acre. And that's a maximum. And that's kind of variable based on the street frontage. You'd have to have, have no more than two people living in each of these because they are small. Jumping into the category below, as small as 150 square feet, and that's assuming, you know, there's a shared bathroom down the hall, and a maximum 350 square feet. There's a minimum width we're recommending of 12 feet. And we're, not all jurisdictions do this, but we're recommending that each unit would have at least a private toilet. So you'd hate to have a situation where somebody, you know, just think of the reality. You want to have a toilet very close where you live. And, but the shower, the bath would maybe be shared. They would have to have a kitchen, and we're proposing, you'd have to have a kitchen, they would have to have a kitchen sink service with both hot and cold water with a garbage disposal and countertop measuring 18 inches by 24 inches, so two feet by a foot and a half. If the unit is not provided with a minimum of refrigerator and a microwave, then a complete kitchen facility would have to be available, one on each floor of one of these residences. And then closets, we're requiring each to have a separate closet. And there's some common area requirements, having a common area for dining rooms, meeting rooms, recreational rooms or similar, and a ground floor entry area. Tenancy, we would have a, there's a provision for 30 days minimum. And that's, so this would not be short-term rentals. It would not be, you know, like Airbnb or that type of rental. So at least 30 days, which is common for citywide. That's how, that's the standard. They would have to submit a management plan for such a facility. The plan would have to be comprehensive and have policies about operations, rental procedures and rates, maintenance, resident and guest rules and procedures, security, which is really important, and staffing needs, including the job descriptions of the staff. A plan will have to be submitted to the planning department and be approved administratively and be active throughout the life of one of these facilities. As with all developments in Paramount, we're looking for quality development on the outside. So there's the living, healthy living or safe and healthy living for the residents. But we want to make sure that it looks what we would expect for any development in Paramount. So they'd have to meet objective architectural design requirements of the code. And we are requiring, proposing vehicle parking, one parking stall per unit, including two for the resident manager. Here's some examples. So these are just what's going on in Santa Monica. And remember, the zone does have a height limit of about 30 feet. So actually, on the right, that was a multiple level, higher, there were multiple level... level, higher, there are multiple levels higher than what's shown here, I just lopped that off, so, to fit more with what may be possible in Paramount. Actually, it's a little, even that's a little higher and denser than what might be permitted here. So with that, we do recommend approval to resolution, which would recommend that the City Council approve ordinance approving Zoda Number 22 for SROs. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Any questions here? Okay.
I do have a question, and what zoning or what area would these be permitted?
The RM zone, multiple-family residential. So some examples would be the area north of Rosecrans and west of Paramount, streets like McClure, Howe, those are some RM zones. Another area would be off of Texaco, north of Somerset, west of Texaco, so streets like that area, well, I'm sorry, yeah, west of Garfield, between Garfield and Texaco, so Texaco, Exeter, Richfield. Those are some examples.
Okay. It kind of sounds like dorm room living. Do we have any developers already that are interested?
We have not been approached by developers. It's really is a niche market, we don't expect too much activity, because that, we do have that density maximum of 22 units per acre, that would, if we would have some interest, that maximum would probably send some developers looking elsewhere to other cities with a higher, higher maximum density. So we honestly, we don't expect too much by way of proposals, but, you know, it'll be on the books.
But that, excuse me, that area that you just mentioned, those areas, Texaco and so forth, that there's commercial buildings there, so they would...
Along Garfield, but just west of it, between Texaco and Garfield, yeah, you're right, right along Garfield, yes, but you go right into the neighborhood, there are, there's, between the parks, Salud Park, across north of the post office.
Right.
Okay, any other questions, gentlemen?
I do have a question, Commissioner Bautista, so if we, if somebody was interested, a developer was interested, all in that area of Salud Park, there's already a lot of apartments, so if somebody purchased one of those properties, and then this new zoning would allow for that person to come in or that developer, take them down, and then build something new, correct?
It's a possibility. There may be a few, I kind of visualizing that neighborhood in particular, there are a few kind of pulledovers, single-family homes, or, you know, the house on the front, and kind of like cottage-style homes. Possibly, you know, they'd have to make a pencil out to make sense for them economically, but you remember, there's also, you'd have to factor in the cost to demolish, which that in itself is not cheap, is not inexpensive. So it'd be a, you know, a developer decision, you know.
I guess I would be a little wary of where they're being placed. Obviously, this is just to approve the zoning, they still would have to go through the Planning Commission to approve the specific site location in the future, right?
Right, it would go to the Development Review Board at minimum. If there is some other entitlement required, then possibly the Planning Commission is as well. Thank you.
Okay, let's open the public hearing portion, John.
No comments in favor or opposed?
Okay, then we need a motion to close the public hearing portion.
A motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Abrego.
Yes.
Commissioner Bautista.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, then if there's no further questions, we will entertain a motion to adopt Planning Commission Resolution 21-008.
Sorry, guys, give me one second. I make a motion, we adopt the, adopt the Resolution Number PC 210008. Two zeros and an eight, excuse me.
Commissioner Bautista will second that motion.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Abrego.
Yes.
Commissioner Bautista.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, item six, oral reports, City Council actions.
Yes. At its meeting last week, the City Council introduced two ordinances that the Planning Commission had recommended approval of. The first ordinance deals with home vegetable gardens, and the second ordinance establishes regulations for accessory dwelling units. The garden ordinance added new things, such as allowing hoop houses, which are similar to a greenhouse, and expanded the area of a home garden in the front yard from 24 square feet to 50 square feet. The accessory dwelling unit ordinance established regulations for ADUs in all residential zones and for residences that are located in commercial and industrial zones. And that is it. Chair Weisenberger.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item seven, were comments? City Attorney?
No comments, other than congratulations, Mr. Chair Weisenberger and Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Thank you.
On your new positions, so we look forward to working with both of you. That's it for me, sir.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments?
Nope.
Okay, staff?
Nothing from staff.
Okay, in that case, we're going to adjourn to an adjourned meeting with the Paramount City Council on May 18th at 4:00 PM. Okay, the next regular Planning Commission meeting will be held on June 9th at 6:00 PM. Adjourned.
The Paramount Development Review Board is called to order. Roll call of members, please.
Board Member Abrego.
Here.
Board Member Bautista.
Here.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Here.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez. Board Chair Sparza.
Here.
First item on the minutes, I need an approval of minutes of April 13, 2021.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes from April 13.
Second.
Board Member Abrego.
Yes.
Board Member Bautista.
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez. Board Chair Sparza.
Yes. Second item is the reorganization of the Development Review Board.
Thank you. Nominations are open for the Office of Chair. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Abrego for Chair.
Are there any further nominations? Nominations are closed. When called, please indicate your choice for Chair by stating the last name of the board member you wish to vote for. Board Member Abrego.
Abrego.
Board Member Bautista.
Abrego.
Board Member Sparza.
Abrego.
Board Member Gutierrez.
Abrego.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Abrego.
Congratulations, Chair Abrego.
Thank you. Okay, then next item is the public comments. Any public comments?
Nomination for the Vice Chair.
Oh, excuse me, sorry.
Open up, you can open the nominations.
We'd like to open up the nominations for Vice Chair.
Are there any nominations?
I believe, I was gonna...
Who's the current?
I'm gonna nominate Gutierrez.
Are there any further nominations? Nominations are closed. Please indicate your choice for Vice Chair. Board Member Bautista.
Gutierrez.
Board Member Sparza.
Gutierrez.
Board Member Gutierrez.
Gutierrez.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Gutierrez.
Board Chair Abrego.
Gutierrez.
Congratulations, Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Next item is public comments.
No public comments.
Thanks, John. New business? We don't have anything for new business. Next item is, any comments from our board members?
No comments.
Any comments from our staff?
No comments.
This meeting is adjourned for until June 9th, 6:00 PM, 2021.
Yeah, I'd like to call to order the Economic Development Board for May 11, 2021. Roll call, please.
Board Member Abrego.
Here.
Board Member Sparza.
Here.
Board Member Gutierrez.
Present.
Board Vice Chair Bautista.
Here.
Board Chair Weisenberger.
Here. Item one, approval of minutes from April 13th.
Sparza makes a motion to approve April 13th meeting.
Commissioner Bautista will second that motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Board Member Abrego.
Yes.
Board Member Sparza.
Yes.
Board Member Gutierrez.
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Bautista.
Yes.
Board Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Item two, reorganization.
Thank you. Nominations are open for the Office of Chair. Are there any nominations?
I make a nomination for Bautista.
Are there any further nominations? Nominations are closed. When called, please indicate your choice for Chair by stating the last name of the board member you wish to vote for. Board Member Abrego.
Bautista.
Board Member Bautista.
Bautista.
Board Member Sparza.
Bautista.
Board Member Gutierrez.
Bautista.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Bautista.
Congratulations, Chair Bautista.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're gonna go ahead and nominate, do we have an open nomination for Vice Chair? Yes? We're nominating for Vice Chair as well, correct?
Yes.
So I would like to nominate Sparza.
Are there any further nominations? Nominations are closed. Please indicate your choice for Vice Chair. Board Member Abrego.
Sparza.
Board Member Sparza.
Sparza.
Board Member Gutierrez.
Sparza.
Board Member Weisenberger.
Sparza.
Board Chair Bautista.
Sparza.
Congratulations, Vice Chair Sparza.
Now moving on, we're gonna go into our public comments. Do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
Do we have any new business? Moving to our reports, oral report?
Yes. John King will give you a presentation on the North Paramount Boulevard's specific plan market study.
John, thank you, Chair Bautista and board members. We briefly went over this specific plan update that's, or development that's been going on since about, well, in the fall, I'm gonna say October, don't hold me to it. So this is the, we're gonna go over more of the, we delved into the market study, the economics behind this area. So here's the area, and little background, or, what is a specific plan? That's a tool in California, furthering the vision for a particular area to implement the general plan. Well, what does that mean? So that means, you know, we have our regular zoning and our regular ordinances about citywide, but this specific plan is the opportunity to delve a little deeper into a very specific area and come up with regulations for that area, more tailored to what that particular area is all about. So this area first came up into two specific plans in 1987. You'll see it's, this area is north of Rosecrans, south of the 105 freeway, south of Southgate. On the west side, on the left of Paramount Boulevard, in this, what you're looking at, the plan area is called Clearwater North, and it's in that shaded area. And then on the east side, so right, the right or east side of Paramount Boulevard is called the Howe-Aurizaba specific plan. And so this effort is to combine them together and then include the areas that were missing along Paramount Boulevard, so including that, the northeast of Paramount and Rosecrans, where, you know, the 7-Eleven's there, and then some areas going up where that 99 cent only stores and on up. And so on the economic side, and you'll see the nice little logo for the area, here's what the goals are, to assess office retail and residential opportunities, evaluate development that's most viable, reach out to brokers and developers, come up with a market demand analysis in relation to the various densities with consideration, you know, there's gonna be that upcoming transit station, a light rail station at Paramount and Rosecrans, and then come up with recommendations. So this is pretty much hot off the presses, this is a new study, and it looked at, well, what is in the area in terms of businesses? And you can see this list, there are some food and beverage businesses, and there's some examples on the right, and motor vehicle parts, health, beauty, and personal care, there's a variety. And based on the population, based on the area, the, like a radius from this specific plan area, and people's willingness to drive and walk, the economic subconsultants, HR and A Advisors, they come up with some recommendations. So there's what's called a one-mile retail gap, and this, on the, on the left supply, on the left side is what's considered the oversupply, you have a lot of these types of businesses, in particular, general merchandise, clothing, and on the right side is what's called leakage. You know, what's leakage? That's kind of what it sounds like, so when you want to go to a particular type of business, if it's not here in Paramount, you're going to other cities, and so your tax dollars, your spending is leaking out to other communities. So there's, you know, you can look here, even though there's 11 restaurants in that in this area, there's still quite a bit of restaurant leakage, there's an opportunity to have more restaurants, maybe a different type of restaurant, maybe a more, a higher quality type of restaurant. So here's some of the conclusions at this point, addressing the retail gaps, so within a mile, the market can support up to 22,000 square feet of new convenience retail, including restaurants, personal care stores, and the city can use different methods and tools to encourage more of these offerings. And then also to redevelop existing retail sites, existing sites could be redeveloped into mixed-use projects in this area along Paramount and Rosecrans. Even where the 99 cent only store is, that property, or I should say, I'm saying 99 cent only store, it's now a Dollar Tree, the property is still owned by the family that founded the 99 cent only store. So they understand, even talking to their brokers, they understand that that's an opportunity site in the future, they would be willing to redevelop it, to have a combination of housing and stores there to meet the future demand. Just one example. And off, on the office side, you can see this, despite low growth in future demand, there's a current unmet demand for residents serving office in this area, SPA means specific plan area, and this area lacks financial office and medical, which could locate as part of some future developments here. And that is really it, that concludes this, and you'll be hearing more as this plan develops in the next few months.
Thank you, John, for your report. Moving on to our comments from our board members, do we have any comments?
No.
Any comments from our staff?
No comments.
Well, with that being said, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting to June 9th, 2021, at 6:00 PM.